Good evening. I'm Rachel Benavides, Communications Director for Via Metropolitan Transit. Por favor, primera estrella cero ahora para escuchar en español. Thank you for joining our live interactive telephone town hall. Tonight, our panel will be discussing ViaLink, Via's mobility on-demand service that's now available in three areas, including northeast San Antonio, Sandy Oaks, and our newest zone serving San Antonio's northwest area, connecting UTSA, Northwest Vista College, and destinations throughout a 14-square-mile area along 1604. For those who aren't yet familiar with ViaLink, it's Via's app-based rideshare service, similar to Uber or Lyft, but at bus fare prices. That means you can book a trip when you need it without having to check schedules or wait longer than 10 to 20 minutes for your ride to arrive, all at the same fares you expect to pay for regular Via bus service. ViaLink customers can travel anywhere within a ViaLink zone and even connect to a Via bus route at convenient transfer points. Again, all for the same fares and discounts as bus service, which, by the way, are some of the lowest in Texas at Via. So thank you all for joining us for this digital town hall. This forum gives us a chance to speak directly to you, our customers and community, to answer your questions and take your comments about ViaLink service. For our phone participants, we'd like to invite you to watch the livestream by visiting keepsamoving.com. Click on the Events tab at the top of the page, and you'll find the streaming player there. To ask your questions live, please stay on the phone. For our attendees participating on the web, you can submit your questions in the chat box below the streaming player. And for our Facebook Live audience, feel free to share this event with your network and post your comments below the stream for our Facebook moderator, who will be sharing them with our live panel as well. Again, my name is Rachel Benavides, and I'm honored and excited to be your moderator for this conversation and to introduce our outstanding panel. Tonight, we have with us: District 6 Councilwoman Melissa Cabeo-Haverda, Via Board Trustee Laura Cabanilla, and Jeffrey Arnt, President and CEO, Via Metropolitan Transit. Thank you all for being here for this important community conversation. As I mentioned, this is a live, interactive forum, and we'd love to hear from you. So we'll be taking as many questions from participants as we possibly can live on this event. De nuevo, primera estrella cero ahora para escuchar en español. And if you have a question, you can press *3 on your phone keypad at any time, and you'll be placed in line to speak with a member of our staff. After that, the next time you hear your name, you'll be live on the call, and you'll be able to ask your questions directly. If you are streaming the event on our website, you can simply type your name and question below the streaming player. So let's get started. Jeff, I have a question for you. We've said in the past that we didn't invent the rideshare. Sorry, we didn't invent the ride, just the rideshare, with reference to bus and transit service. Now, we're in the rideshare business. Can you tell us a little how ViaLink operates, where we offer service, and how we plan to expand?
Certainly happy to answer that question. First of all, let me also join Rachel in her welcoming of all of you. We realize time is the most precious commodity any of us have. No matter who we are, we get 24 hours in a day. And so we thank you for spending part of your 24 hours today with us. So let me talk a little bit about the background that led to ViaLink. For probably two decades, the public transportation industry was troubled and challenged by trying to meet the mobility needs of the less densely populated areas of cities, suburban settings. The street network is not continuous and not a grid. Oftentimes, the communities themselves are gated. And so while we sent big buses out there, we didn't necessarily get the kind of response and ridership that we would really like. And so we have larger buses that do not carry a lot of people in those settings. But technology has now offered us an opportunity to kind of match the service and the vehicle to the environment in which it works. So buses work well in the urban core, where you have the grid network and you have the density. But outside of the urban core, we began experimenting with what we call ViaLink. And ViaLink replaces those big buses with vans, but there are a couple of significant differences. The first is, I always describe ViaLink as Uber-esque. It's not identical to Uber, but it has a lot of similarities to Uber. So it operates within a certain boundary. It doesn't operate throughout the entire county, but it does operate within a certain boundary. You are, when you book a trip, and you can book a trip on an app, you can book a trip online or over the phone. There are a number of ways to book a trip. But when you book the trip, the system will tell you where to meet the vehicle. So it may not be at the point that you're standing. You may have to walk up to 200 feet, but you'll walk to that virtual, we call them "virtual stops." The app, if you use the app, will tell you what vehicle is going to arrive when, including the license plate number and the name of the driver. So if you use Uber or Lyft, you're very used to that. You'll complete the trip, and when the trip is complete, you'll be given the opportunity to rate your ride. Rate your ride, just again, like Uber and Lyft. So I wanted to throw a few numbers out there. If we look at average wait time, and we advertise that typically you won't wait any longer than 20 minutes, but let me tell you what the real wait times are. In the northwest sector, and we're going to go through each of these sectors. On the northwest side, it's about 12 minutes. On the northeast side, it's eight minutes. And in Sandy Oaks, it's five minutes. So we way beat that 20-minute. And let me just say that on the northwest side, on the northwest side, the fixed route buses that operate there are running every 120 minutes. So the fact that you can get a bus via Link in 12 minutes versus having to adjust your schedule for a bus that comes by every two hours is a real benefit. The other real benefit to ViaLink is the fare, as Rachel said. One thing that is not Uber-esque about Via, we don't have any kind of surge charging or any upcharging at all. You pay the $1.30 base fare, if that's the fare you would pay on the bus system. There are a number of discounts that will give you half price. If you're a senior, for example, you can ride weekends totally free on any of our services, including ViaLink. And so you have that guarantee of that low-cost ride on ViaLink. Now, we operate the service in three areas. Those of you that have a screen, we're showing our newest zone, which is the northwest zone. And if you imagine an area that runs along 1604 between northwest Vista and UTSA's main campus in a swath that then permeates out from there, that is the northwest sector. It's about 14.4 square miles. You can travel anywhere within that sector, which is another benefit, because the buses didn't necessarily take you everywhere. You can go anywhere in that sector for that one fixed fare. Or, as I said before, if you're a senior, you can ride for free on the weekends. We will also connect you to the mainline bus system. So we'll take you to transfer points for the mainline bus system. We don't charge for a transfer. And so if you paid the fare on the ViaLink vehicle, you ride the bus itself for free. So that's a real advantage. Now, the first area we offered ViaLink in, as I said, northwest is the newest. But the original, the pilot area, is on the northeast side of town. It's about 17 square miles, and it is kind of bounded by 10 and 1604. We have a connection at Naco Pass. So again, we connect into that area. And in fact, we are about to invest in some improvements at Naco Pass that will create a more welcoming environment for that transfer. Again, this service has been out there a few years. And so that's the service that has the seven-minute, average seven-minute wait. And I'll tell you that the average scoring of the drivers ranges from 4.7 in the northeast, 4.9 in the northwest, out of five, 4.9 as the average. And then we'll go to Sandy Oaks, which is the third area. Sandy Oaks is a slightly different form of ViaLink. We call it ViaLink Express, because it's oriented at picking up people in one area and then expressing them to connect to the mainline bus system, which is, the connection is at Brooks Transit Center. And as I said before, the average wait in Sandy Oaks is a matter of about five minutes. Now, it can be longer, because that's a long area to serve. And if you happen to ask for a trip right after it left your point, it's going to take a while for the vehicle to get back. The average rating of the drivers by the Sandy Oaks people is 5.0 out of five. So generally, from a customer satisfaction perspective, we're very satisfied, and it appears our customers are also very satisfied with these options.
Fantastic. Fantastic, Jeff. Thank you so much. I'm sure that our audience is excited to hear that the service is growing and to learn about all the different benefits, particularly how frequent a ViaLink vehicle can be called upon, how convenient it is to be able to book your trip when you're ready. And especially, we keep emphasizing that our fares and discounts all apply to ViaLink service, because that's really what distinguishes this service, I think, from other rideshare services available in San Antonio. Before we move on, I want to remind everyone that if you have a question, you can press *3 on your phone keypad at any time, and you'll be placed in line to speak with a member of our staff. After that, the next time you hear your name, you'll be live on the call, and we'll be able to ask your question directly to our panel. So if you're streaming the event on our website, you can simply type your name and question below the streaming player. But press *3 if you're on the call, and we'd love to hear your question live. I'd like to talk with Councilwoman Haverda now. Councilwoman, thank you so much for joining us. And thank you for being a champion for Via and for public transportation. As you know, Via is working to offer convenient, innovative service to move more people faster. We'd love to hear your thoughts on ViaLink and how your constituents and San Antonians in general can benefit from mobility options.
Yes, ma'am. Well, it's a pleasure to be with you here tonight. Wonderful to be in front of a beautiful city, and so I'm grateful for the opportunity. I'm really excited about ViaLink, and I'll tell you why. I represent District 6, but really, this goes on throughout our city. There are contingent of people that ride Via every day. They go to school, they go to work, and they have a lot more frequency. Generally speaking, it's inside 410 in our city. But in my district, we also have outside 410. And so sometimes, we hear the critique of, "Well, I don't see as many buses out here. There's not as much frequency." And there is a reason for that. There's rhyme and reason for everything. But with Via, it's because a lot of the newer neighborhoods, they're more suburban, and they're not built on these grids. They have very kind of windy, beautiful streets, but that's not so easy for a big bus to get around. So what happens is that the innovation has to come in and fix that problem. And I'm really grateful that Via was innovative, and they're looking into ViaLink. What's happening now with this pilot program, which partly is in my district, they are going to, all the people that live outside 410, a little closer to 1604, who don't see those buses as frequently, they'll be able to use ViaLink. They'll be able to use Via as a whole, really, and be able to call the rideshare and get a ViaLink van near their homes and be able to get where they're going in a very, very quick amount of time with more frequency than they're used to, at least closer to 1604, and at a very inexpensive price. Now, you mentioned northwest Vista. That's in my district. And UTSA is a little outside my district. But students going to school, I think this is going to be a game changer for them. There are those in our city that have vehicles and those that don't. And the people with vehicles may not understand the accessibility issues that some people have to vehicles. But if you have to get to class, and mom took the good car, there's no way to get there, they'll be able to call ViaLink, and they won't have to wait as long. And they'll be able to get to class on time, and that serves our economy. That serves us all as San Antonians.
Fantastic points, and you're absolutely right. It's as easy as downloading a free app, which I'm sure our friends who enrolled in classes and faculty members at northwest Vista and UTSA, who are just two of the participating college and university campuses who are enrolled in our UPAS program, know all about downloading apps. So this one's for free, and you can book your trip, you can track your trip, and you can rate your rider. So it's got all the components that modern transit riders and certainly college students are accustomed to. And I think they can use it fairly easily. I hope that they'll try it when they learn about it tonight. You touched on a point that I think is excellent and one that we want to drive home, is that ViaLink does replace traditional bus service in the zones where it's operating. And what it's doing when we replace those routes in that area is that it's creating access, where access may not have existed in certain areas of neighborhoods and communities, where, like you said, the way that the roads are laid out and the way that the turns are laid out may not accommodate a 40-foot bus. But certainly, one of our brand-new vans that are fully accessible for wheelchairs, and you can request bike racks as well, can navigate those areas, those suburban areas, and areas like the northwest and the northeast zone in order to create access for transit where it may not have existed before. So excellent points, and I thank you so much for bringing those up. I'm sure that the constituents in your area and San Antonio in general appreciate you being here with us tonight to talk about these points. So thank you, Councilwoman. One more time, I'd like to remind our audience that this is an interactive forum, and we want to hear from you. So please dial *3 at any time to speak with a member of our team. And the next time you hear your name, you'll be live on the call to ask your question. But before we take our first live call, I'd like to hear from trustee Laura Cabanilla. Trustee Cabanilla, Via is an important part of San Antonio's economic recovery. And as COVID conditions improve and businesses and services in various sectors are opening and hiring, we continue to connect essential workers to their jobs and home again. How do you see transit and Via's new on-demand model as part of that economic and workforce recovery?
Yeah, thank you, Rachel. And it's a pleasure to be here as well tonight with everyone. We know, as we come back from the recovery of the pandemic and trying to enter what we were pre-COVID, that accessibility is key, especially when it comes to jobs. The councilwoman talked about education, the two universities there in the area that the new northwest Vista, the new northwest service area is going to be servicing. So transportation is connected to basic necessities. It's a quality of life. It's a game changer when it comes to economic mobility. If you cannot get around, get to your job, get to school, you are at a disadvantage. And so through Via's various modes of transportation now, with ViaLink being offered in multiple locations throughout the city. And next year, in 2022, additional locations will be online for ViaLink services. I believe this is a game changer. In addition to the bus services, we have the ViaTrans. You have the HOV lanes that have come on place there. North of 1604 along 281 and I-10, hopefully soon to be I-35 down the road. We also have our special events activity. So we're trying to connect San Antonio, right? And ways that others can get around, ways that friends can get around to go visit you, ways that you can go to your job through a low-cost service of $1.30. We want to try and take advantage of that, and we believe that Via is part of that solution.
Absolutely, and those are excellent points. You know, we like to say that transit puts opportunity within reach and that that's how we uplift our community. And I think that ViaLink is an excellent example. The way that you framed it is an excellent example of how we're innovating to do that in all areas. And actually, we have a caller on the line now. Raoul has a question about our monthly pass and ViaLink, which goes back to one of the points that we've been driving home, which is that Via offers really great fares, and those apply to ViaLink as well. So let's hear from Raoul.
Hi, yes, just wanted to, I guess, I buy the monthly pass for, you know, I go downtown. And so can I use the monthly pass to pay for my ViaLink to get me? Because I drive to the park-and-ride, and then I take the bus from there. So could I potentially use the pass to pay for ViaLink to get me to the park-and-ride, which would then take me downtown, my express bus? Does that make sense?
I think so. Jeff, do you want to help us with that one? I think the question is, can I use my monthly pass to take ViaLink and connect to a park-and-ride?
Okay. I thought I heard that he was doing that, which, let me encourage you to do so. So the ViaLink operates, pretend that ViaLink is a bus, if that helps. Anything you would pay on the bus, you pay on ViaLink. You don't pay anything differently. So if ViaLink was a bus, you would pay $1.30 if you were paying for a single fare. You would flash your monthly pass if that was how you paid for it. It works on ViaLink the same as it does on the bus. And I want to thank you also for asking this question, because it reminds me that earlier Rachel was talking about the university pass, the UPAS program. And so for any students or parents of students who are out there, I think the important part of that is that the fares for those students has been, if you will, prepaid by the university. So if a student is at one of those universities and therefore, by virtue of being at that university, has a UPAS, they're able to ride ViaLink all the time for free because their fare has already been covered.
Absolutely right. And panel, we've touched on a lot of great points. And Jeff, it reminds me of San Antonio's favorite jingle, "It's so easy when you take the bus." I think we can probably adapt that and say, "It's so easy when you take ViaLink." Walk us through, how easy do you think it is to use this app? And I know that you've been a ViaLink customer. Tell us how it works. You don't have to sing. Trustee Cabanilla, I know that you were looking at trying the service out. Have you had a chance to use it yet?
Yeah, I have, actually. Went out there today, the new northwest area. And it's pretty simple. You know, if you think about, again, Uber or Lyft-type application, you would plug in your address to your destination. It would request where you're going to be picked up. And you just got to be careful as to where the pickup location is. It's not going to be door-to-door, so it's not very exactly like Uber or Lyft. But within 300 feet of that destination, they will come get you. Again, your monthly pass, your regular bus pass. You can pay cash. You can utilize the Mobile Plus, Via Mobile Plus app, to purchase it. And then lock in your location. You'll receive a text message when your driver arrives. It'll give you the license plate of your driver and then an estimated timeframe as to when the pickup will be and when you will be delivered. And so there's always nuances when you bring in new applications and new services. And I encourage everyone to go out and use it. It's very affordable, $1.30. You can't go wrong with that. And so within the timeframe of 10, 20 minutes, you can get to your destination very easily.
Fantastic. And out of five stars, what would you give your ride?
It's an easy five stars for me.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much. So we're looking for our next live caller, and I want to remind everyone that we want to hear from you. Dial *3 at any time to speak with a member of our team. And the next time you hear your name, you'll be live on the call. So we have an internet question we're happy to take from Bradley. And Bradley's question is, "Why is the ViaLink app kept separate from the main ViaBus app?" Or, "Why is it separate from the main ViaBus app?" And it would be good to integrate them. And Bradley, you're making an excellent point, and I know one that Jeff is excited to talk about, which is that, looking into the future, we are looking at developing an integrated app that can be used seamlessly between our services. Jeff, would you want to talk to us about that? I know it's one of our goals for our Keep SA Moving plan to modernize transit in San Antonio.
Yes, it certainly is. And we clearly recognize the benefit of having one app. And so right now, we're sometimes having to link from app to app. The basic reason that we're where we are today is because this is a service that's operated by an outside contractor. And their contract expires, I think, within 12 months. And they have their own software platform, their own app, et cetera. And so because there's a very, I shouldn't say "high," there's a possibility that, when we go through the procurement, that a year from now, it will be a different company, and they would have a different platform and a different app. And so we'll have to work with that company to see how we can tie their app into our app. Again, that company will have a limited period of time, and we could face another changeover. But they'll be at the beginning of a contract period rather than at the end of a contract period. But our intention is to have an app that would allow you to actually book Uber or Lyft if you prefer to pay their prices to the $1.30, or ViaLink, or get information on next bus arrival, or buy fare media. So we want to have that all in one place. And that's our objective over the next five years.
Thank you, Jeff. And I also want to let everybody know that for our ViaBus riders, we have a GoMobile Plus app version that's out now. Want to recommend that everyone go and update your ViaGoMobile to the Plus version, and that'll help you plan and pay for trips moving forward. We have a live caller who's got a question about something that I know that we're all on the panel here concerned about and advocates for, which is accessibility services and how transit can help our disability community, persons living with a disability or who use our ViaTrans service. And Megan has a question about using ViaTrans and Link, which I think is a great question. Megan, you want to ask our panel? Oh, Megan, I'm so sorry. It looks like the call dropped, so forgive me, everyone. But Megan, and Brandon, and Raoul, thank you for your questions. And let me just remind everyone that we'd like to hear from you and keep those calls coming in. Dial *3 at any time to speak with a member of our team. And the next time we hear your name, then you'll be live on the call. So trustee Cabanilla, I'd like to come back to you. Actually, do we have a, we do have a live caller? Okay, fantastic. We were able to bring on a live caller after all, which I'd rather do than hear myself ask another question. So let's have Carlos come on. Carlos, what's your question?
Hey, don't cut me off.
No.
How are you guys, first of all?
We're good, Carlos. Thank you so much.
So here's the thing. My first question is this. How long, ViaLink-wise, let's say, when do they stop servicing? 12 o'clock, midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning? What?
I believe, I'd have to look up the specific hours. 9:30 PM is when we end service on ViaLink.
5:30 AM to 9:30 PM. Part of our Keep San Antonio Moving Plan, which was kind of the plan that put all of this together, is to expand what we call span of service, the hours over the day in which the service is operated. The additional funding that will help us do that, we start receiving in 2026. So that's going to be something of a short-term barrier. But our intent is to broaden the service hours. And certainly, as we look at ridership, if we're seeing heavy ridership at either end of that span, we're going to look at adjusting the span as well.
Not seven days a week, right, Jeff?
Yes.
It's seven days a week.
You said 2026? Correct? Hello?
I'm sorry, Carlos, can you repeat your question?
You said 2026, by 2026?
We will begin, you know, there was a vote, you probably recall, last November, that would dedicate 1/8 cent sales tax to help us afford more service, more ViaLink service, rapid transit service. But we don't start receiving those additional funds until 2026. Now, I don't want to imply, therefore, nothing will happen until 2026. I'm just simply saying that in 2026, we will be more financially enabled to do that across the system. But in this service specifically, or in any bus service, if we see ridership at either end of the span of service growing, we are likely then to move that on that service, move the span of service. move the span of service. The 2026 funding will allow us to do that more globally.
Thank you again, Carlos, for your question, and thank you, Jeff, for clarifying. I'd like to invite everyone to go to keepsamoving.com to learn about our plan to expand and mobilize, I'm sorry, modernize transit in San Antonio. These are some of the points that Jeff is making now, where expanded hours and availability of services on the list of goals, definitely on our Keep SA Moving Plan. We're working to accelerate that plan now, but you can get a broader picture, particularly what may come when funding kicks in from our vote in 2020, where voters approve the plan and to fund the plan. And you can learn more details there. So thank you again, Carlos. We have another Raul on the line, says, and good night for Raul tonight. Thank you for calling in, Raul. A Raul has a question. He wants to know where ViaLink services are. So Jeff, this is a good opportunity to go over the zones again. If you, we'd like to hear from Raul. Raul, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Raul, and I am considered disabled, and I'm a senior. And it says you're in our area, and I have not seen it over here in the east side. I've called before. I left messages for John Harola, and I still have not received any message from him. And can they come over here to the east side? I live over here in 1604 and 10 area. I'm disabled, have no vehicle. I've been out of a vehicle for two years, and I cannot afford it. My income is under a thousand a month.
Okay, Raul, thank you so much for calling and letting us know. We have your information. I believe someone will be reaching out to you. Our plans are to expand up to eight new zones in 2022. And Jeff, you can expound on that a little bit, and then our other panelists can talk to us about those expansion plans. Do you want to let us know, Jeff, what's planned for 2022 and in the Keep SA Moving Plan, particularly for ViaLink service areas?
So Rachel, I will say that we expect to have up to eight zones. We have three now, so we expect to add five more this fiscal year. I will tell you, this is, those of you that have given us of your time this evening, I'll give you a little secret, which is that we have received some funding from Toyota as seed funding to help us advance a ViaLink service that would serve Texas A&amp;MSA and the Toyota area and the Madeline area. So that's going to be one, because we have the seed funding, they're providing us some, some money to give it started, that we will see in the short term. We eventually intend to move almost completely around the circle. I think several of the other zones we're looking at this, this year are the express type services. So into 2023 and 2024, that's when we'll look at additional zones of the kind of magnitude of 15 square miles.
So Councilwoman Havert, you're familiar with, with all different parts of San Antonio, specifically in your District Six. As we make plans to expand ViaLink service, you, you called it a game changer before. How do you think that this would change the transit experience for people in different parts of San Antonio?
Well, you know, I'm grateful to and honored to be the Chair of our city's Transportation and Mobility Committee for the city. I'm focused very heavily on designing a transportation system that serves the entire community. An inclusive transportation design reflects the way people move around the city. And Via is a big part of that. Our public transportation plays an important role in this design. It enhances equity, accountability, affordability. And learning about ViaLink tonight even expands it more greatly. We're starting to include areas that, as we mentioned before, you know, maybe didn't have as much frequency on the ViaBus, and they're able to, to call ViaLink, get where they're going within 300 feet, and make it to work on time, make it to school on time, you know, make it to a fun place on time. It doesn't all have to be utility, you know? But, but it is very useful, very convenient. And I think this is economically, it could be, it really could open a lot of doors for, for some of the, the areas in our town that are, you know, older areas and, and maybe could use a little revitalization. Getting those individuals out of those communities and into the city where maybe they, they normally don't have an opportunity to go because they didn't have that transportation. I think that's, you know, a weak transportation system is a disproportionate impact on working and low income and immigrant families. So I feel like ViaLink is even opening more of a door of opportunity for all of those socioeconomic factors that we have in our city, and these, these groups of people who have more, will have more opportunity. And for us, it's more about the options that we're giving everybody, not just low income, but, but even people who, as I mentioned before, live maybe closer to the 1604 area of our, of our city. I guess the outer loop, I don't know if we're calling that, that yet, but I'm going to start calling it that. You know, the 1604 loop, that it's, it's, it just provides more opportunity, more options for them, for drop off, for pickup, for locations, flexibility, frequency. And so I think this is really opening a lot of doors for us, and I think it does, it's going to change lives.
Councilwoman, if I can just, Rachel, real quick, and just say that, you know, as we continue to grow the city, you know, we keep on adding additional people, population. We know Texas is a state that people are moving to. We see the, the increase of population along the I-35 corridor. We know that access to public transportation is going to be key. We heard, you know, in previous town halls, that college universities, UTSA, for example, parking lots, it's, they're full. You know, we're trying to figure out where to park. And as Via continues to expand services and add additional ViaLink areas, I believe it's going to be a game changer, like you said, right now. It's just a matter of us being able to utilize the services more frequently. And, you know, what would you say, how can we continue to integrate and work with the city and the county and other elected officials to ensure that we're on top of the growth pockets of, of the city and knowing where to place the next ViaLink areas? What are your, your thoughts on that?
Well, that's a good question. And, you know, right now is a perfect time to answer that question. We just got census results. We're looking at redistricting. And so we're very keenly attuned to what, what areas of our districts and really our city are expanding. I think some of us had a little bit of surprise that some of the areas of the, of our city were growing more than, than we even understood. I'm far west, and the growth has been out in that area for, for years and years. But we're starting to see it shift a little bit more towards UTSA and kind of the District Eight area, you know? And we, I think part of this is, as we, as we watch our city grow and, and even make efforts for it to start growing a little more into our city, you know, we want to have people moving back into more of our inner city to, to make sure that we are economically, that we're able to support our entire city. I, I think, again, you know, this is where things like ViaLink are so important. Now, working with elected officials, I mean, who knows? I don't know how to do that. I'm kidding. I really think that it's, part of it is, it's, it's just so much education, is helping us to understand what is, what's available to our community and really what's not available to our community. And we all, you know, in the city, we're divided up by districts. Of course, there's state districts and other, you know, even congressional districts. But making sure that you understand what's outside your bubble, what's going on in your neighbor district, not just your own, because you know yours very well. But maybe there's transportation issues in your neighboring district that you didn't know about. And so I think a lot of it is education, working with Via and really understanding how we can work together. But so much of it is, is exposure to it. You know, I'm, I'm looking forward to my first ViaLink ride. I think that's going to teach me a lot about some of the, 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 the pros and cons. You know, as you mentioned, it's, it's still fairly new, at least in my quadrant. And I'd like to see what, what is it like for an average person to get on this ViaLink, go somewhere and, and walk that last 300 feet and, and experience that? Really, that's the best way to teach anybody, including elected officials, and what's going on out there, is to immerse yourself in it, to, to really go out and do that, walk that walk, so that you can come back to city council or wherever you are and then talk the talk.
Excellent.
And Rachel?
Yes, sir.
I was going to pick up on, I'm going to pick up on actually what, first of all, I will, I will tell the Councilwoman that working with you as an elected official is a pleasure, so I want to start there.
Thank you.
One of the advantage, we talked about, we talked about the growth of the city, et cetera. The first two zones, the Northwest and Northeast Zones, had bus service already, and we replaced it, and we actually were able to pay for it through, using the funds that paid for those buses. Well, the additional zones are likely to be in areas that currently have no public transportation service. So that example I gave for, for Toyota, for example, there is no public transportation service today down to Toyota. And so what ViaLink will allow us to do is put a more appropriate initial form of public transportation. So that broadens the area in which people can take transit to get a job, for example, right, in the first place. And it also, from the, from the disability community, from the ViaTrans view, ViaLink is a fully accessible service. So again, people who are in ViaTrans would have no transit access right now to that sector of the city. ViaLink will provide it. And so this is one of the exciting things that we're going to be able to expand into areas that we currently don't provide service. And I believe that the 10-year plan has something like a 30% growth in the amount of area that we cover. There's 30% more area of this county that we'll cover, largely led by ViaLink.
Thank you, Jeff. Again, excellent discussion and insight into the plans for expansion of ViaLink in the areas of town, of the region really that we serve, that we're looking to, to offer that service to. Before we take our first poll question, I would like to bring on another live caller. I do believe we have Madam Mayor from Sandy Oaks on the line.
Good evening. This is Mayor Mickey Ball from Sandy Oaks. And first and foremost, I want to thank the Via team for working so diligently to bring the service to our community. For those who don't know, Sandy Oaks is a suburban city of about 5,000 people in the furthest southeast portion of Bear County. It has been a historically economically disadvantaged area. And some of the comments that were made by some of the other officials just previous to this are the exact reasons why we, we worked so diligently with Via to bring service out here. Education opportunities, job opportunities, entertainment opportunities. You know, our citizens are traveling to San Antonio, so they are, you know, spending tax dollars in San Antonio. It's a, it's a win-win for our community. It's a little slow getting rolling. We're, we're still pushing, you know, the, the service to educate the public on what is available. But I do commend Via for taking this new approach, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mayor Ball, for calling in and for riding ViaLink. We know that you're a customer. We were able to, to experience a ride with you. And I'd encourage everyone to go ahead and go onto viainfo.net or to our Facebook page to watch Mayor Ball's first ride on ViaLink, which we were able to capture. So thank you, and we appreciate the community of Sandy Oaks for their support of ViaLink. Remember that Sandy Oaks has ViaLink Express service now to Brooks. We encourage everyone to, to try that, experience that new transit option happening in the southeast, southeast region of Bear County. So let's go take our first poll question. So everyone, we want to hear from you. We're going to ask a quick poll question. If you're on the phone, you can vote by pressing the corresponding number on your keypad. And if you're online, you can vote by selecting your response below the streaming player. Our first poll, poll question is this. Have you ever used a mobility on demand or a rideshare service? Press one if you've used ViaLink. Press two if you've used Uber or Lyft. Press three if you've used ViaLink or, and/or Uber or Lyft. And press four if you've never used mobility on demand or rideshare. And I'll repeat those again. Press one if you've used ViaLink. Press two if you've used Uber or Lyft. Press three if you've used ViaLink and Uber or Lyft. And press four if you've never used a mobility on demand or rideshare option. And so I'll thank everyone for voting. I want to let you all know on the panel and on the call tonight that we have over 1,200 participants on tonight's event, and we thank everyone for joining. We love to see those numbers because we know that our community is participating in this important conversation. We have a web question from Mario while we wait for those results to come in. This service could be appealing to college students. That's what we're hoping for, Mario. What outreach is Via doing to the colleges? And I'll begin by saying that we have outreach events and digital and social outreach happening at UTSA and Northwest Vista College in these zones. We thank them for their support and their coordination and collaboration to get the word out to the student organizations. We are reaching out through our public engagement office directly to the student groups and to the administrative offices on those campuses to find new opportunities in order to reach students. As you all may have guessed, social media is really big for us in terms of communicating directly to audiences, and that is especially true for the student demographic in San Antonio. We would like to encourage everyone to go onto Via's social media and digital pages, connect with us, sign up for alerts, et cetera, and look out for an event coming soon in the Northwest area, where we will be beginning a series of pop-up events, and we'll be celebrating the kickoff of ViaLink in the Northwest zone. So from the public engagement perspective, this is what we're doing to reach out. We'd love to hear from you. Events like tonight are part of our efforts to reach audiences in that zone, including the students, the faculty, and the families who are connected to the university and the college there. So thank you so much, Mario, for that question. Jeff, did you have anything to add or any of our panelists regarding how to reach folks in that area or encouraging them to reach out to us?
I'd like to throw a little challenge to Jeff and maybe our audience too, even the Councilwoman.
Right, right.
What is a good TikTok that we can communicate this message to the younger audience and see which one will win and maybe play it on one of our links, our websites? I think, you know, allowing others to be creative and helping us tell the story is always a good thing. And, you know, what best to have that shared through social media and, and, you know, our friends through TikTok there? So I just wanted to see if Jeff and the Councilwoman might be able to take up that challenge here.
Challenge accepted.
Absolutely.
Definitely. I'll start working on my rap right now.
Great, great suggestion. We'll definitely take you up on it. While we wait for those results from our poll question, we did have a question come in online, and, and someone asked, how do we find the virtual stops? So that's an easy question about using the app. Jeff and Trusty Cabanella, you've been familiar, more familiar with using it recently. Jeff, do you have a, a quick how-to? And I'll just say this to Bob and to all the callers, all the persons in the audience who are wondering, how do I use this? Go and download the free app. It's really intuitive. It's super easy. If you want to read about it first, go to viainfo.net/link. And Jeff, I believe that one of the steps in using the app, it does show you where the virtual stops are. Is that right?
Well, so I want to punt this question to Trusty Cabanella because she used the, literally, used the app to make trips today.
She did. Today, that's right.
Yes. Well, and, and, you know, where I went, there was no virtual stop. There wasn't a bus stop there. It was either the area that my destination was going to be at, so a library, a public library, or it was within 300 feet of that public library. So I think it really depends on your intersection. It depends on the ease of traffic and the, the grid of where the street is. And so through the app itself, there's, I'm assuming, some geo spacing of, of how they determine the pin location. But very, you know, but the ViaTrans, or I'm sorry, the ViaLink driver will indicate where that location will be, and they'll drop you off at that area. And it'll show you and tell you within your mobile app of the location as well.
That's exactly right.
And virtual stops are, virtual stops are dynamically updated, interestingly enough. So, for example, if, if trustee was at the, at the library and she had to walk 300 feet, if we started seeing repeat trips to the library to some magnitude, then the system can just create a virtual stop. And that happened a great deal on the Northeast, and I'm certain it will happen on the Northwest as well.
That's a great point, Jeff, because we talked about earlier, this system being virtual, that we can expand the boundaries if we see indications that requests are being outside of, of the existing boundaries, you know, a Walmart or a school, for instance. And I think this is the beauty of having this type of technology where it's amenable to what our customers want. And if we see the demand, we can automatically change it based on the numbers. And I appreciate you doing that with, with our team and the staff there at Via.
Fantastic. Thank you all. So we have the results of our poll question now. Of those who responded, we have 16% have used ViaLink, 28 have used Uber or Lyft, 10% have used both Link and Uber or Lyft, and 46% have never used mobility on demand. So we hope that of those who haven't used mobility on demand yet, you'll try ViaLink. And for everyone else, thank you so much for being Link users. We have a live caller. Terry, I believe you also have a question about our app.
Hi, this is Terry. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am. What's your question?
Perfect. So I'm just wondering, what are the apps that are required for you to download on your phone? That's question number one. And then I do have a follow-up.
Okay, it's a ViaLink app, V-I-A-L-I-N-K, two words. It is free for Apple and Android users. You can also download our ViaGoMobile Plus app if you'd like to connect to our larger system and plan trips and pay your fares through the ViaGoMobile Plus app. So ViaLink and ViaGoMobile Plus are the apps that I'd recommend for any Via customer. And did you, you said you had a follow-up question?
Yes, I have a follow-up question. I believe earlier you all mentioned that the schedule was from 9:30 AM to 9:30 PM. Is that correct? Or from the Northwest page that I, that I found earlier, it says 5:30 AM to 9:30 PM. What is the correct?
It is 5:30 AM. It is 5:30 AM to 9:30.
You are correct. If I said it wrong, shame on me. You are correct.
Thank you. So do I get like a free pass or something?
You know what, Terry? Why don't you, why don't you go ahead and, and make a comment on our Facebook page, and we'll try our best to connect with you?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Why don't we take our next poll question? As we get to the end of our hour here, we'd like to hear more from our audience. So before today's town hall, had you ever heard of ViaLink? That's the question. Press one for yes, press two for no, or press three for, I'm not sure. So again, before today's town hall, had you ever heard of ViaLink? One for yes, two for no, three for, I'm not sure. And so thanks to our 1,200-plus participants on the call tonight, we'd love to hear the results of this particular question because we want to make sure that we're getting the word out to you now. Let's take one more live caller while we calculate those results. Louis, what's your question?
Hi, everyone. Good evening, everyone. How are you tonight?
Good evening, Louis. Thank you so much for calling. We're doing just fine.
Okay. First of all, Mr. Arndt, long time ago, I was an intern at Via. It's good to see you again, sir.
I wish I could see you. But, yeah, thank you.
Anyway, my question is a two-part question. With the expansion of ViaLink and the expansion of the style With the expansion of ViaLink and the expansion of the South End over by Brooks City Base and everything, and the new employers going in, is there any chance that you will link up to like Amazon and Microsoft because they're building those huge facilities out there? And how will you change bus service for those shifts because you know they run 24/7? That's one. That's part one. And part two is, as we expand out more in the bus service, we start returning back to normal, do you expect the routes to go back to what they were before? Or do you see more expansion on the routes? Or do you see cutbacks? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Those are great questions. So Jeff, the first question is, is there any chance that you'll see route adjustments for the shift work that will be taking place once the major employers open up in the Brooks area?
Absolutely. In fact, we have a grant application out there, I believe, right now, partnering with Brooks and Southwest Research Institute and the city of San Antonio to look at developing some kind of automated internal shuttle within the Brooks area that would connect to the transit center. So that's how you would connect in the system. But clearly, that's not the only way we could proceed. I'm just saying that that could be a really interesting, really interesting opportunity there. Then the second question had to do with...
The second question was, as COVID conditions improve, will we see route improvements? Or do you foresee cuts rather than expansion to future service?
No. No, we, so those who have been around me for more than five minutes know that my mantra is frequency, frequency, frequency. And that's where we continued ahead. So right now, we've reduced frequency in some areas, and the ridership is off a bit in some areas. As a service, as a ridership returns and the service returns, we expect to double down on that frequency commitment.
Thank you for your question, Louis. Before we go to our next poll question, Trustee Cavanilla, did you have something to add?
I did want to add that we are looking to hire, though, individuals, operators, too, to help with that expansion. Hopefully, as we come back into our services, you know, we're looking for additional drivers and operators. And, you know, there's a sign-on bonus as well. So look at Via's employment webpage. I encourage everyone to talk to others that are interested in being a part of our Via family. I think that's the other component to that question, Jeff, in that we also need to ensure we have enough drivers and operators for our services.
Absolutely. Just put a couple of numbers out there. Bus operators start at $20.25 an hour. That's a starting wage rate. And there is a sign-in bonus of $2,000 that you earn over a period of time as you go through training and probation and then into regular service. So it's a great opportunity right now.
Absolutely. And you can go to viainfo.net/employment to see those specific operator and mechanic jobs. You can go to viainfo.net/jobs to see all of our openings. Thank you, Trustee Cavanilla, for bringing up an excellent point. We are hiring. We are looking to hire. We're actively out in the community at every job fair and festival that will have us in order to recruit members from the community to serve our community. Jeff mentioned some of the really great salary and benefit perks to those who apply. So yes, I'd encourage everyone to apply. Once we can make a number of hires that we're looking to make, then it'll be an easier transition to recovering some of the service out there that folks are asking for. So our last poll question, just a second ago, our folks answered, press 1 for yes if they've ever heard of ViaLink before today, 2 for no, 3 for unsure. 54% have heard of ViaLink before today. That's fantastic. 37% answered no, and now you can answer yes. You heard of ViaLink, and you've learned a lot about it tonight. 9% were unsure if they'd heard about it. And so we're happy to, we're happy to know that we're connecting with the community. Moving into just the final few minutes of our event here, we want to know, what is the most important feature of ViaLink to you, our audience, tonight? Press 1 for more flexible hours. Press 2 for increased frequency. Press 3 for decreased travel time. Press 4 for minimizing the walking distance. Press 5 for increased pickup and drop-off locations. Press 6 for low fares. I'll say again, what's the most important feature of ViaLink to you, our audience? 1 is flexibility. 2 is increased frequency. 3 is decreased travel time. 4, minimizing the walking distance. And 5, increased pickup and drop-off locations. 6 for low fares. While we calculate those, we do have another online question. With San Antonio's growth in size and population, would Via consider a dedicated rail sector, something that's separate from regular traffic? We always get at least one rail question. Jeff, what do you think?
We are definitely considering rapid transit, which is what rail is a form of, right? We call our system Advanced Rapid Transit, ART. We have two lines that we want to initialize that service. One that runs from the airport through downtown and into just past, south of Southtown, and the other that operates essentially east-west Commerce Street, Houston Street terminating at AT&amp;T Center. These would be operated with rubber tire vehicles rather than electric vehicles because, A, you can bill twice as much for the dollar, and B, you have a lot of flexibility. I've always thought, had we had light rail on Commerce Street of late, that we would have had to shut down the light rail because you can't get off the rail, right? The vehicle, the rubber tire vehicle, has so much more flexibility that if we had an ART line on Commerce Street, we could go around that construction. So we do want to have rapid transit, which would have largely a dedicated lane, a high frequency, which is, you know, my mantra. It would have station areas, much like a rail station. It would have off-board fare collection, much like a rail station, so that when that vehicle pulled up, the doors, multiple doors would open, people would get on, and we wouldn't have to deal with the line at the fare box. So that will, all those things work towards speeding the system up, as well as an integration of the rapid transit vehicle with a traffic signal system that will grant some form of priority to those vehicles. So absolutely, rapid transit is a part of the KSAM Plan, the Keep San Antonio Moving Plan.
Excellent, Jeff. Thank you, and thank you, caller, for your question. Councilwoman Havreda, the city of San Antonio have been excellent partners, and they have pushed us to innovate, 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 along with our partners at the county. What are your thoughts on Jeff's response regarding an ART system that would operate much like rail but with a lot more flexibility, a lot lower cost?
I think it's very exciting. I think we have to be innovative with the rate of speed that our city is growing. And we even start to think about our neighboring towns and how we're sort of meshing into each other. Yeah, I think it's hypercritical that we, that Via really maintains its innovation. And, you know, there's a lot of, I guess, a lot of noise, you know, around advanced rapid transit system, and rail really is a little bit of a buzzword. But I think if we focus on the fact that it's ART, it's not exactly, you know, rail that we've been talking about for years and years. And it's really just, again, a way to make, to help our San Antonians move around, to get through our city with the least amount of hassle and trouble, and really getting ready for the, as much as we've grown, we have to get ready for the amount of growth we're about to undertake in the next 20 years. So I think we have to talk about it. It's really a conversation that we have to have as a city. But of course, Via is already on it. They're already innovating, and I'm very glad to see that.
Thank you, and we're really looking forward to continuing our partnership with the city. I do have the results of our last poll, and in, not in order of importance, but in order of the way that we ask the question here, the priorities for our audience regarding the features for ViaLink. 10% are most excited or most appreciate the flexibility. 17% the increased frequency. 7% the decreased travel time. 40% are largest response, prioritize the minimized walking distance to the stops. 27% the increased pickup and drop-off locations. And interestingly, 0% for the low fares, but probably because our low fares are pretty consistent and people already count on those. So that, great, great question. Thank you all for your responses. We are in the last very few minutes, and so I want to thank everyone for coming to our live event, taking the time to join us, this community conversation. We appreciate the opportunity to speak directly with you and answer your questions. We did have over 1,200 participants tonight, and so we thank each and every one of you for taking your time to join us. If we weren't able to get to your question this evening, you can leave a voicemail after the event by simply staying on the call when we end, and you'll be transferred into our private voicemail system. You can also send us an email at keepsamoving@viainfo.net, or call our office at 210-517-4715. We'll host more of these events in the future to keep you informed on what we're working on and other important updates. And so thank you all again. Thank you to our panelists, Jeff Arndt, our president and CEO, Councilwoman Melissa Havreda, and also to our trustee Laura Cavanilla. Thank you all, and have a good night.